I'd like to call the September 26th meeting of the Overland Park or the Johnson County Community College trustees to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call and recognition of visitors, please.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Mark Ferguson, Don Rao, and Richard Schroeder.
Thank you. Open forum is an opportunity for people to speak. We do have a speaker tonight. I would remind the audience that the open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers must register by completing this registration form prior to the open forum agenda item, giving his or her name, city of residence, name of any group he or she is representing, the topic, and a brief summary of the presentation. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak behind the podium. If there are a significant number of registered speakers, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired on live television, offensive comments based on prospective status or class are prohibited. The Chair of the Board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in a board meeting. I'd like to ask Vincent Clark to come forward as you have the open forum.
I wanted to speak in connection with Debbie's comment.
Okay. I apologize. It was my understanding you had signed up for the open forum with this.
Can I have that license during the population station?
We can do that. Chair will allow that to take place. Okay? So, is there anybody else registered? I think not. So, we will close the open forum session. Awards and recognition is Dr. Sapchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. The Johnson County Library Foundation every year gives out the Pinnacle Awards. These are awarded in four categories: literacy and education, business and entrepreneurship, arts and advocacy, and public engagement. These are all areas that the Johnson County Library Foundation pursues. This year, we're very honored that one of our own is being recognized. Emily Bearman, our General Manager of Performing Arts, is one of five individuals chosen for the 2013 Pinnacle Award by the Johnson County Library Foundation. She was honored specifically for excellence in the arts. And here's, I'd like to read a little bit about Emily. After receiving her bachelor's degree in music with an emphasis in voice from UMKC's Conservatory of Music, Emily began her work in arts administration. Over the past 20 years, she has held positions with the Lyric Opera of Kansas City, the Kansas City Symphony, and the Performing Arts Series at Johnson County Community College. After 14 years with the college's foundation, where she was involved in the capital campaign to raise 20 million for the construction of the Rainier Center and Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, Emily returned to her first love, the performing arts. She sang with the Kansas City Symphony Chorus for 10 years and has performed solo for special events throughout the greater Kansas City area. She appears on a host of occasional programs on our own television station, JCCCTV, and perhaps the crowning achievement of her singing career when she was one of the cast up on the stage for the rendition of "Hey Dude."[263.14][263.14](Laughter) So, as General Manager of the Performing Arts Series, she is responsible for booking artists, marketing events, and raising money. She wants to use performing arts to make an impact on the citizens of Johnson County and beyond by presenting quality artists, championing arts education, and collaborating with the many talented organizations and individuals in the greater Kansas City arts community. It was my pleasure to work with Emily for about, what, three years?
For ten.
Okay, great. And I have to say, I admired Emily's professionalism and her ability to get things done. So, Emily, congratulations. Do we have an award?
I don't know that we do, but would you come forward? I don't know that we do. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've done great work at the college. We appreciate that very much. Is there anything you'd like to say?
(Laughter)
You have to sing it, Emily.
Well, one minute. That's, thank you. Thanks to everybody for the acknowledgement of this award from the Library Foundation. I am very gratified and honored to receive it on behalf of Johnson County Community College. And I'm really fighting the urge to make a plug for our most recent Performing Arts Series event coming up this weekend, Friday, Saturday at 8 o'clock, New Dance Partners. But I hope you all can be there. But I enjoy what I do very much. I love working at Johnson County Community College. And I'm so happy to be able to share my love for the arts with the community. So, thank you.
You will observe, I believe, a change in the agenda. In visiting with Trustee Lindstrom one day, he indicated, you know, Jerry, if students are first at Johnson County Community College, why don't we place them up near the front of the agenda? So, Mr. Rogers, Elliott is here with us today, and we've decided to move the student presentation up to the front of the agenda, students first. Mr. Elliott Rogers.
Thank you. Good afternoon. First, I would like to thank you all on behalf of the Student Senate for giving me time to present to you. As students, we value the chance to communicate directly with you in your meetings and appreciate the transparency from the Board of Trustees with information concerning the student body, such as explaining planned tuition increases. We look forward to working with you all over the course of this year. September has been an eventful month for Student Senate. On September 9th, 12 senators at large were sworn into office, along with four Executive Board members. Since then, we have added two more members at large and filled a vacancy on the Executive Board by electing Jeffrey Raymond as the Student Senate Vice President. On the 16th, we hosted a town hall meeting to open communication with the student body and received input on several issues pertaining to campus services, as well as Student Senate outreach with clubs and organizations. This week has marked the first meeting of our Budget, Rules and Conduct, Services and Fundraising, and Public Relations Committees. Each of these committees, as well as the Inter Club Council, which began meeting two weeks ago, has defined goals for the year, such as planning events and updating Student Senate documents. Upcoming events include our school mascot's birthday celebration, hosted by the dance team, where we will be contributing an activity, as well as Trick or Treat for Kids, These Hands Don't Hurt!, a domestic violence awareness campaign, and Clubs and Orgs Day, which will happen in the end of October. Also in October, we will be reaching out to students to assist the strategic planning effort with a student perspective. We appreciate the value you place in our perspective and are always ready to give input. Thank you.
Any comments from any of the trustees? I've had a chance to interact a little bit with Mr. Rogers, and I really appreciate your passion for leadership and passion for the student body and wish you the very, very best this year. You're doing great things. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. College Lobby's Report, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. It's been a relatively quiet summer and fall so far. We did indeed complete the special session, which was limited, in fact, to two days, the first part of September. And legislators returned to Topeka and quickly got done with their work on amending the hard 50 sentencing law, as well as confirming a number of conferees that required Senate confirmation, including the new Appeals Court Judge Caleb Stiegel. That was one that received quite a bit of press, and so you probably have read about that particular occurrence during the legislators' time in Topeka in early part of September. Interim committees are beginning to meet. Still, there's not a lot on the table yet. There's a lot of campaigning going on. This is the time where people like me get lots of envelopes in the mail with requests for campaign funds. And I think this week alone, there were four or five events just in the past couple of days that are going on. And so, that happens throughout the fall months as we approach January, where fundraising stops for elected lawmakers at the state level. The other big news from September was the Board of Regents' budget request. The Board asked for the restoration of the cuts from last year, as well as a few enhancements for the coming year. That request immediately came under fire from some. Their higher education has been scrutinized by a few folks in leadership, specifically some of the budget committees. And the target is mainly state universities. We escaped cuts last year as a group, meaning the community college system, as well as the technical colleges. I don't believe, I wouldn't want to say what is going to happen in the 2014 session as legislators begin discussing the 2015 budget, but everything is fair game. Immediately after or on the same day that the Board was making its request to the Governor's Budget Office, some bad news came out of KU's Journalism Department with a tweet related to the Navy Yard shootings that became a high fire fodder for legislators related to higher education's budget. In fact, there are some that have said that KU will not receive any budget appropriations until there is some employment issue taken care of over there with the person who was tweeting. That will continue on throughout the fall, and litigation is certain into the coming years. But not soon after that, then there was another incident over at K-State through an innovation group that is loosely connected with the university. And again, it's those types of things that draw the ire of some legislators as it relates to higher education. I only mention this because we're all attached and we're all part of the big happy family. And there are some that are concerned that the community colleges and technical colleges did not receive a cut last year while other areas of higher education did. So, I just want to keep that information in front of you so that as you continue to make budget decisions here, we're aware of what's going on at the state level. The other thing that we'll be dealing with next year is continued efforts to cap or change property tax laws. And there's another bill that I'll speak about at the end of my report that came out late last session that not a lot of people paid attention to because it was so late in the session. It wasn't heard. It will receive hearings next year, and we'll talk about that in a moment. I would say, though, by way of good news, I participated in a Johnson County Economic Development Legislative Tour also early in September. And there were a half dozen or so Johnson County legislators on the tour. A number of stops were made across Overland Park. But in particular, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that there was great discussion while the legislators were on the campus over at Blue Valley in the CAPS program, and just discussion about how that translates into higher education opportunities for those students. The other piece was, we spent some time at the Prairie Fire Development and had a great discussion with Fred Merrill. And the reason I mention that is because of the Museum of Natural History. This is the first site outside of New York City. And several times, Mr. Merrill commented on how pleased they were to have Dr. Sapchak's involvement in their Board of Directors. So, congratulations, Dr. Sapchak. And I do think that that's a great opportunity because there will be a number of educational opportunities affiliated with the museum once it's up and running. Back to the coming attractions. House Bill 2413 is the bill that I referenced earlier in my report. This is an interesting bill that would change the rules of the Board of Tax Appeals, and it's one that we'll need to pay attention very closely to and will likely want to weigh in on, should it have hearings or if things start to move or change with that bill. And essentially, the bill lays out that if a property owner makes an appeal or a request to the Board of Tax Appeals and a decision is not rendered within 120 days, rather, whatever number that is put forward by that individual becomes the new valuation for that property. It seems rather ridiculous. When you look at it on its face, there's a lot of moving parts that are a part of that, but that could have a major impact on the way our budgets are formulated if significant change in the property values in the county are approved under that law, if it were enacted. So, I would stop there. It's a rather brief report, but I know that you have lots of business to do this evening. So, let's see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Carter?
Just, the Legislative Education Committee was going to tour the Regent Schools and one community college.
They are.
During the summer. Have they identified which community college they're going to tour, and when will that occur?
I'd need to look back at the calendar to see. I believe it's in October when the tour will occur. They were initially going to visit El Dorado or Butler County. They are now visiting Fort Scott.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Carter? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Time for committee reports and recommendations. Management Report, Trustee Stewart.
All right. The Management Committee met on Wednesday, September 4th, and Trustee Musil was in attendance at that meeting. The minutes of the meeting start on page one and run through page 13 in the packet. And we have five recommendations to address, and the first one is the proposed Brown and Gold Club changes. And the first recommendation on page two has to do with the Brown and Gold Club. Dr. Judy Corb reviewed the current aspects of the Brown and Gold Club's membership and benefits, and she described then the proposed changes. The changes will include the club merging with the Shepherd Center, which is an outside organization with a similar mission, and charging a fee of $16 per credit hour, which is equal to the current rate of student fees for being charged to Johnson County residents over age 60 and over. So, that'd be a change from 55 and over as eligible for membership. And previously, then, there was no charge. They were eligible to take free class. And so, those changes are in front, or recommendation is in front of us, and I'll make the motion here. It's a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to approve a special rate of $16 per credit hour for Johnson County residents aged 60 and over. Qualifying students will receive this rate only when they enroll in classes where there is space available on the published date each semester. And I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continue.
All right. Our next recommendation is on the Sustainability Initiatives Fund, and it's on page two as well. It's to request the Board of Trustees to authorize a transfer of funds that were generated as a result of recycling efforts from the college to the JCCCT Foundation. Revenue that results from materials being recycled is recorded on the college's books in the Sustainability Initiatives Fund. And this type of transfer to the Foundation requires a specific approval of the Board, and this is a transfer into the Foundation for scholarships. So, it is a recommendation of Management Committee that the Board of Trustees authorize a transfer of $5,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the JCC Foundation for student scholarships. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next.
The next recommendation, and it's related to our college lobbyists. And on pages five and six, there's a report and a recommendation to award an RFP for the services of a college lobbyist. The college invited 16 potential proposers to bid on these services, and five proposals were received. Summary of the fees that were quoted by the five proposers appears on page eight. The RFP asks proposers to provide information about their project approach, experience, qualifications, fees for both state and federal activities, and potential conflicts with other clients that they represent. The review committee ranked the written proposals and determined that the Carter Group and Paul Sinelli, PC, should be interviewed for further consideration. At the conclusion of the entire evaluation process, it was determined that the proposal submitted by the Carter Group would best meet the needs of the college. It should be noted, as a matter of full disclosure, that Trustee Musil, who's associated with Paul Sinelli, recused himself from the discussion at the outset due to his conflict of interest, and he did not have any input into this recommendation. So, it is a recommendation of Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from the Carter Group, Inc., to establish an annual contract for lobbyist services in amount not to exceed $73,000, $78 plus expenses pursuant to college travel policies. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
And one abstention. Motion carries. Next item.
Next, Master Agreement for Learning Management System with Desire to Learn Limited. The next recommendation that is described on pages six and seven relates to a master agreement for a learning management system with Desire to Learn Limited. In June, the Board of Trustees approved the award of an RFP for the college's learning management system. And since that time, the college's Office of General Counsel and Procurement Services have been negotiating an agreement with D2L. D2L has requested that the modification shown on page six be made to the State of Kansas Department of Administration Contractual Provisions attachment. As required by statutes, these modifications would require this Board of Trustees' approval. We've done this for some other national companies that have a master contract throughout the states, and they're fairly stubborn in wanting to adjust those contracts for each individual state. So, that's what this is asking. And so, it is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the modification of the State of Kansas Department of Administration Contractual Provisions Attachment for the Master Agreement with Desire to Learn Limited. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mitch, will you, what does this software do, actually? I mean, it's what the faculty uses to...
It's the distance learning software. So, the faculty uses it for driving courses and that sort of thing.
Thought that was important, that you understand that.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next item.
I think this is the final recommendation. Lease renewal with the KU Regent Center. Page seven is a recommendation by the college to renew its lease for space at KU Regent Center. We've had this space, the same space, at the same rate for 10 or more years. There has been no increase over that period in the rate charge. The college and KU continue to cooperate to maximize the educational benefit of the residents of Johnson County. Classrooms will be made available to JCCCT up to the equivalent of 7,200 hours of instruction use within the timeframe of 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from August 21st, 2013, to May 16th, 2014. So, it is a recommendation of Management Committee that the Board of Trustees approve a lease agreement with KU Regent Center for the use of classrooms from August 21st, 2013, to May 16th, 2014, for a sum of $30,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
That completes our action items. We did discuss on the agenda, Dr. Jay Anle and Michael Rhea presented a sustainability presentation. The college has a goal of becoming a zero-waste campus by 2025, and information was sent about the college's reduction in trash volume and the expenses related during the past three years. Don Perkins presented the fiscal year 2014-15 budget calendar. And we also reviewed the monthly sole sources report. A $1,000 sponsorship for Moxa was approved that will be paid for under the contingency amount that was approved by the Board of Trustees in July. You'll also see the summary of bids between $25,000 and $100,000. There was two of those, I believe. Those appear on page nine. Rex Hayes gave us an update on where we're at. We're proud to say we've opened up the Culinary Center, and I guess we haven't had any issues. So, classes are operating. Denise Moore gave us a report on the technology fund objectives and an update on that. And unless Mr. Musil has anything to add to that, I think that concludes my report.
Any other questions of Trustees Stewart and Musil?
Thank you.
For that report. Learning Quality, Trustee Cross.
Yes. We had a Learning Quality Committee meeting on September 9th, 2013, in this room. Trustee Lindstrom and I were in attendance, along with the other committee members. And several presentations were made. We do have one recommendation and action item. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2013, 2014 Learning Quality Committee Working Agenda, as is shown subsequently in the board packet. And before I formally make that motion, the minutes for the September 9th meeting are at pages 21 and 22 of the board packet. So, I will go ahead and make the formal motion for the working agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Trustee Lindstrom.
No questions, but just a comment. Want to commend Dr. Anderson for putting this together. I think he did a remarkable job.
I concur.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
If I may, Mr. Chair, there were also several other reports and presentations made that day. One I wanted to touch on was healthcare interpreting and legal interpreting presentation made by Tina Wolf. She gave an overview of the healthcare interpreting program and a program that's designed to give bilingual English and Spanish students the awareness, knowledge, and skills necessary to serve as entry-level interpreters and translators in the healthcare settings. Due to the great success of this program and a new program for legal interpreting, which is a similar program designed to give bilingual students skills necessary to serve as entry-level interpreters and translators in legal settings, it was created. And both programs are highly selective admissions programs that I just wanted to highlight. And I know in my own law practice, there's a tremendous need even in our metropolitan area for bilingual services. So, I just wanted to commend the college for being at least with the curve, if not ahead of the curve, on these issues. So, several other reports I'll just touch upon. Steve Hansen gave a report as Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee. Clarissa Craig gave a report on educational affairs and Courseleaf. Scrolling down here, Rick Morin gave a report on transfer and articulation projects that we're working on. And then, finally, Sherry Barrett gave a report on the Status of Aequip Project. It was a rather brief presentation at the end of our meeting, but all of them were done well, and I just wanted to report that to the committee and then probably ask Trustee Lindstrom if he has anything to add.
No, I would echo your comments, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Appreciate the report. Next item is the Human Resources Report. The Human Resource Committee did meet on September 3rd. One of the items that was discussed was the Performance Evaluation Update. Dr. Corb presented a draft of the proposed performance appraisal, which includes five different sections: one on job objectives, one on core competencies, one on the overall rating based on job objectives and core competencies, a narrative section for employees' professional growth, and then Section Five, Employee Self-Assessment. I believe that in your packet, you will see a timeline expected. I would just draw your attention to that, that you can see a number of the items have been completed. We have some items that are ongoing here in September. Finalized design and approved system hopefully by September 31st, which is right around the corner. And then, implementation begins, and we begin the individualized performance plans throughout the rest of the year. Dr. Corb, do you have anything else to say about that?
We actually have completed the September objectives there and are a tiny bit ahead of schedule because we've done some of the initial training with the supervisors and managers as well. So, we're on target with where we're headed with that.
It's a new process, new system, and the training will be, I think, a really important part of the process as we implement the performance system.
It is because we have to transition this. We have to, you know, kind of incorporate it with what we've done in the past with this new one and get people set up so that next year we'll be fully on the new performance appraisal. So, it's a little bit of a transition period right now, but it's going well.
We reviewed exit interview reports, which we, as I recall, we do that kind of quarterly. And I really appreciate how the staff is dealing with those exit interview reports and how we're dealing with issues where and when they are. We had a Benefit Task Force update. I believe that those recommendations are in process, and you'll be working with the Faculty Association in discussion as we move through that. Also included is the 1314 working agenda that you find in your packet. And we do have one action item to approve that. So, it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the Human Resources approve the Human Resources Committee working agenda for 2013-2014 as shown in your packet, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion about the agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I believe that that concludes our report. Dr. Corb, do you have anything else from the Human Resources Committee?
I don't think so.
Okay. The next item is the audit, and I just point out that you have the minutes from the audit committee. Trustee Musil actually gave a very detailed report on that at our last meeting, and we didn't, I think maybe a couple of meetings ago, but the minutes missed, so we have the minutes of that meeting for your reading pleasure. There is no action necessary. President's Recommendations for Action, Treasurer's Report, Trustee Stewart.
I think we'll let the treasurer make that report instead of me, and that would be Trustee Lindstrom.
Well, I didn't expect to be here today.
Oh, is that why? Okay.
Yeah, that's right. So I would prefer...
I guess I didn't understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
I will make that report then. You have the report in your packet there, and the state grant payments of 11.1 million were received during August and will be reflected in next month's report, and expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. So it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasury report for the month of July 2013, subject to audit, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Trustee Cook, if I may, I'd just like to commend Don Perkins. If you've noticed on your Treasurer's Report, you'll see the inclusion of a column regarding prior-year activity to date, applied rather consistently throughout the report. This gives us a good opportunity to chart our progress, compare it versus a year ago. And you'll also notice the auxiliary funds, a very thorough representation of that data, as well as including a kind of an overview of the nets on those different auxiliary initiatives. So thank you, Don, for bringing all that together. It's very much appreciated and kind of provides, makes this report much more meaningful.
I concur, Don. Thank you. It gives us better detail about the line items and really appreciate the work on that. I know it took some time. Okay. Clinical Affiliate Agreements, Dr. Sobchak.
Yes, the following affiliate agreement is intended to provide our students with the needed clinical experience in the programs as indicated. This is for their dental hygiene program, specifically in credit instruction. The agency we're talking about here is SCORE ONE for Health, part of the Kansas City University of Medicine and Biosciences in Kansas City, Missouri. The clinical experience itself is related to grade school health screening. The recommendation is, it is the recommendation of the college administration at the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into an agreement with the above agency for the clinical experiences indicated for the period September 27th, 2013, through June 30th, 2014.
That's a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The next agreement is for Health and Human Services out of Continuing Education and Organizational Development. The agency is Stark Pharmacy in Overland Park, Kansas, and the experience is for a pharmacy technician. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into an agreement with the above agency for the clinical experiences indicated for the period September 27th, 2013, through June 30th, 2014.
That's a move.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And your monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. There are a couple of things I'd just like to bring up before we get to our lightning round, the much anticipated lightning round, I have to say. First of all, several weeks ago, we executed the state of the college. I'd like to thank Julie Haas and her team for producing and orchestrating this event, and also the crew in the Polsky Theater for putting it off in perfect fashion, so thank you very much. Also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Cook for his opening remarks, Patrick Rossel Allison for his, and our faculty members, Jim Laker, Sean Daly, Andrea Broomfield, and Kathy Carver, who all put the best foot forward with regard to our faculty and as to why we're such an outstanding institution. Perhaps the highlight of the show is always our students, and Elliot Rogers and Galen McGee were outstanding in that capacity, so thank you very much. Several, about the same time, we also had an event called Meet the CEO. This was put on by the foundation. We'd like to thank Kate Allen and the foundation team for creating this event. I hope there is no need for another one in the immediate future. Also, we had a spontaneous student speaker. David Moore, he's a member of our Student Senate, was outstanding and wowed the crowd. And so, again, when we put our students out there, they always live up to the billing, so thank you very much. Last week, Trustee Cook and I attended the Council of Presidents and Trustee Meetings at Cowley County. There are a couple priorities that were discussed by the presidents I'd just like to share. One, the presidents talked about, of course, benefiting our students, and the big focus was on making sure that credits and courses, credits for courses and programs can transfer from college to college and from college to university. The Regents are very supportive of this concept, but as we all know, there are many, many details to be worked out, but there seems to be a lot of positive momentum in this direction. Additionally, another component of our discussion regarded state funding of community colleges. It's always the topic of the day. Many of our college schools are supportive of a statewide tax for community colleges. This is something that our college would not support, but nevertheless, we are all together hoping to explore ways to increase state funding for community colleges. Lastly, I'd like to share a little bit from our League for Innovation meeting that we were at last week. Dr. Corb and I were able to attend that. It was my first meeting in that group, and there are nineteen-member colleges in the league. It's obviously the most prestigious organization we can be a part of as a community college. I believe we were a charter member. While there are nineteen-member colleges, there are about 200 colleges waiting to get in. Membership is capped at nineteen. It was my first meeting, and the first order of business I witnessed was the dismissal of one of the colleges from the league. So now there are eighteen community colleges in the league. It was also interesting to note that I learned of two application portfolios that were returned to their schools in need of improvement. So sometimes we think this type of thing's a slam dunk, and it really isn't. So now the pressure is on Julie Haas, who is preparing the current application portfolio. I thought by making this publicly known. But once the application is submitted, a site visit will be scheduled. And I have to say, as they talked about these site visits, the most important element of that is trustee presence. It's critical that we have 100% trustee presence when they come here to visit and make that assessment of whether or not we could be in the league. So I just wanted to reemphasize that with this group, and we'll give you plenty of advance notice when that meeting will be scheduled. And so now, Dr. Corb, the lightning round.
Okay. I have two things. Actually, these are from Andy. Andy is gone because he's representing us well on state committees in Topeka and Manhattan and Hutchison, so he's making a little circuit. So he's not here. But the first one is that the Dental Hygiene Department completed their accreditation visit successfully, which means that they obviously were renewed accreditation. So congratulations go to the Dental Hygiene faculty and Margaret La Judas for their good work in getting all of that put together and passing that accreditation. This next one, I have to read this because I'll miss something if I don't read it. So, "In an effort to bring the campus together in the spirit of service, JCCC has partnered with Stop Hunger Now to host a meal packaging event for international hunger relief. So tomorrow, more than eighty students, faculty, and staff will work side by side to package 14,000 highly nutritious meals. The meals will be sent to Stop Hunger Now's international distribution partners, many of which are children's aid organizations which send the food to schools. Over the past month, JCCC has raised $3,500 to pay for the meals, thanks to a number of generous community donors, including the Mitchellsons, and to the fundraising effort of the Nursing Club, Nutrition Club, InterVarsity Club, Phi Theta Kappa, the Student Sustainability Committee, and academic support. The initiative has also included a local hunger focus, raising awareness about JCCC's own food pantry, and encouraging food and monetary donations toward that cause. The project has been a cross-department collaboration spearheaded by Mary Smith in Service Learning, Anna Page, Professor of Dietary Management, and Kim Kreiner in the Center for Sustainability." So a really neat example of a service learning project that has pulled together really the entire campus and part of the community. So to highlight, that event is taking place tomorrow. Dennis, you're next.
Good afternoon. This is my second most favorite time of the year in an academic year. It's the start of classes, and it's a lot of energy. So we create activities that create engagement for students. So I want to highlight two of those, one of which was a cup of joe. Our new president was out one morning visiting with students. Two mornings, that's right, two mornings. He was actually visiting with a lot of students and escorting them to their classes as well, helping them find their way. It's just another piece of that welcoming that students get. So thank you for doing that. That was...
It was fun. It was terrific.
And he was, I think, a little tired that afternoon.
Yeah, but it was well worth it. It was a great experience.
It was good. It was well received by the students, too, and a couple of them had some kind of funny looks on their faces when this guy in the suit says, "Well, I'll take you there." "Oh, aren't you the president of the college?" "Yeah, but we'll take you there." So that's the neat part of the whole exercise. The other part was the campus kickoff went on, and there's hundreds of staff and students that help out with the campus kickoff. What it is, it's a time where, we all had it in our universities, where it was a time where everybody comes outside and just gets to know people. So it's designed to create certain engagement opportunities, not only with clubs and organizations, but with departments, with different offices, and even four-year schools help with it as well. So both courtyards were full of activities, and it's just a neat engagement time for a lot of students, getting to know the campus. Lastly, I will invite you to a very, if you're tired of football for the weekend, which some of you are not, but there's another sport going on during the fall, and it's volleyball. We happen to have the number-three ranked team in the country, and they're playing this weekend in a tournament with five other teams, three of which are also ranked in the top twenty in the country. I don't think you'll ever see another tournament like this unless you go to postseason somewhere where there's a lot of ranked teams. It kicks off tomorrow at 3:00, and they'll be playing through Saturday as well. So number-three ranked volleyball team in the country, Johnson County Community College, will take on some of the top twenty teams. So, thank you.
On the workforce development side, there is so much going on at the intermodal, if you've been driving south on I-35. And so I wanted to update you on a few things we've been doing this past month on the economic development side. On the city of Edgerton, they've been hosting events on Monday nights this month called Intermodal 101, where they've been educating companies coming into the area, as well as people that already live in the area. And we were fortunate enough this last Monday to present on educational opportunities to support the intermodal growth. They had around 150 people at that event, and we've continued to have numerous calls over the past couple of days. We spoke specific to the commercial driver's license program that we are partnering with MCC and Kansas City Kansas Community College on, as well as the supply chain logistics programming that we also have on the workforce side. In our partnerships over the last month with Gardner, we worked with the Southwest Johnson County EDC, as well as the Gardner Chamber, to do an event, a joint event, over the same thing, to educate the people in the area about what types of education is available to prepare the workforce. The activity is really going very steady down there. Tom Reader, who most of you know, has really had a lot of inquiries, and so now the questions are, what's the workforce look like? What are you doing to get people ready? So we spoke about our programs at that joint piece in Gardner, as well as met with Mr. Brady at the Gardner Edgerton High School, he's the principal there, and his counseling team to talk about the program and the opportunities as well for their students who are graduating that may want to go directly into the workforce. So we talked about the entry-level logistics, you know, the OSHA hazardous materials, any of those entry-level to get them started, and then when they get in those companies, we know there's more funding for them to take the next step. So a lot going on out south that we're really excited about. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
One of the outcomes of our board retreat a couple of weeks back was how we can become better advocates of the college. And I know that the lightning rod probably takes a little extra special effort, but I've had people in the community say we really appreciate hearing those kinds of stories. Julie and I have talked a lot about how we can increase our efforts on the public relations side, and while we have InfoServe and while we do a lot of communicating internally, we have a community out there that just thrives on hearing the good work of the faculty, the good work of our departments, and the programs like this. So I, for one, really appreciate the time you take to tell us what may be little details to you, but to the community that are very, very important to keep aware of what's going on. So thank you very much. I do not believe we have any old business tonight, nor do I believe we have any new business. And so we will move to reports from board liaisons. I will start with the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Dr. Sobchak referenced that earlier, that we were in Cowley Community College. This was one of our meetings in the year where we spent considerable time on strategic planning, and we had a five-hour session Friday afternoon into the evening on strategic planning, and we followed up Saturday morning with it. And Mr. Carter alluded to this in his report as well. We have nineteen community colleges, and I think it's important for us to remember that while we are all focused on student teaching and learning, and students come first, the needs of the community colleges are quite different, and we have some community colleges that are just really trying to survive. And so when we get into discussions about the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, it's important for us to represent our own colleges, but to remain and practice some humility and understand what's going on around the state, and as a state association, how we might raise the level of community college impact across the state. And sometimes when we have the programs we have, we lose sight of the challenges that some of our friends have around the state. So in that discussion, as Dr. Sobchak indicated, the presidents talked about, the trustees also spent a lot of time talking about the financial piece. We talked a lot about advocacy, and I think we boiled down, after all those hours of discussion, that the trustees of representing KACC are also interested in somehow finding commonness in closing the financial gap, and so that financial goal will be really important. I found it interesting that they were all interested in and want to learn more how they can become better advocates, not only for their own college, but for the state system, the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. And again, for the benefit of those that weren't aware of it, Julie Haas has put together little cards for the trustees, and it's an outcome of the trustees saying, can you give us some more information so that it's easy for us if we're out in public and a topic comes up, we can pull out our cards and know something about it? I think we all believe that we should be engagers, connectors, if you will. It's not our intent to micromanage or know the detail, but if we can begin to know a little bit about a program and be able to connect someone in the community with the department or the person here on campus, then we think we're helping a little bit spread the great story. I shared these at KACC Saturday morning, and they all wanted to see what we were talking about, and I know that a number of them are going to try and follow a similar activity because we all want to be better advocates in supporting our college in spite of the challenges that we have. In that advocacy role, we've also asked, I, some of us believe that if you're a trustee, you should be able to talk a little bit about a program, and so as a model at KACC, we've now incorporated that we'll try and have two presentations from colleges so we can learn more about the colleges. And so I volunteered to do the first one. And again, I want to thank Julie and staff for putting together, actually, it was the PowerPoint presentation on our health simulation program. And again, it wasn't a matter of trying to be braggadocious about that wonderful program and how it's impacting not just locally. I believe we're anticipating a shortage of some 80,000, and maybe it's, I forgot the zero, 800,000 nurses by 2030 or 2020. And so the simulation lab that our college is the beneficiary of, in part because we've had some great philanthropists, and Dr. Zambrowski, with a base grant, and that led to other... had some great philanthropists, and Dr. Zmbrowski, with a base grant, and that led to other donations. So, now we not only have an impact in Johnson County and in the state of Kansas, but we have an impact nationally, and we have an impact internationally with our outreach in Uganda. And the message was, forget about the amount of, because it's not that common that you have people come along and say, "Here's $750,000," or "Here's $250,000." But even if you have someone that is interested in donating 1,000 or 2,000 or seed money, it'll spur interest in others. And I was really amazed at the interest of the trustees at that meeting, saying, "Tell me more about how the philanthropy works and how we can get engaged." Two of them asked for the presentation, Julie, and I didn't bring it back, because I gave it to them and said, "Here, you can take the disc, you can take the," because they wanted to use it as a model when they present in the upcoming. We only meet four times a year, and so if we have two presentations a time, there's eight opportunities we have in a year to learn more about the programs in our community colleges. And so, it's another extension of that advocacy that we think is so important. Our next meeting is in Coffeyville, December 8th and 9th. That's a Sunday, Monday. Would invite any of the trustees to join us for that experience. And then I think the following time will be in Topeka, when we do the luncheon Phi Theta Kappa luncheon in our event in Topeka. So, while Coffeyville might be a stretch, you might think about Topeka in February. So, unless there are any questions, that concludes my report for the Kansas Association of Community College trustees. Research Triangle trustee Musil.
The Research Triangle Board will meet this coming Monday at 7:30 at KU Edwards Campus. We get a monthly report on the sales tax receipts that have been received. They are slightly above last year, reflecting the overall economy being slightly better this year. JSert has received some note of writing in the news, simply because Jackson County has its transitional medicine tax on the ballot on November 5th. It would be a half-cent sales tax for 40 years. Johnson County passed a 1/8 cent sales tax in November of 2008, which is perpetual, but raises about a third of what the Jackson County tax would raise. I think most of the JSert folks see, if the Jackson County vote passes, that will simply strengthen the overall metro area's ability to demonstrate its leading edge in clinical research and application of pure research for the health of people in the area and beyond. So, I'll have a report next month about our meeting on Monday.
Thank you. Any questions of trustee Musil? Faculty Association, Dr. Williams, and I think Dr. Clark.
Thank you very much. Well, I guess I'll just start by saying there's been much activity this month regarding the faculty and faculty association. As you know, there's a lot of attention and interest remaining on the budget, focus on the budget and efforts that the faculty might, you know, what role the faculty may play in working cooperatively with the administration and the trustees on addressing some of those challenges. After our last Board of Trustees meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with our faculty association research team, and because of our meeting last month, I had a few questions, and I posed those questions to the research team, and they generated a nice document that I shared with Joe, and I believe by now all the trustees have received. This faculty association research team report answered a few questions that I had initially that essentially surrounded questions that examined, you know, costs, concerns, or costs that could be attributable to faculty in particular. I asked them to take a look at rates of inflation over a period of time, about 10 years, also data with historic trends associated with mill levies, and just to have a better sense of, again, what faculty contributions may have been to the current budget concerns. And could I confirm that you have all received that document by now? So, I don't want to spend a lot of time, you know, going through the document, but I think if you look at the two conclusions that the team reached, I would like to underscore those, by examining cost attributable of faculty and other groups. It led to two important conclusions for faculty. One is, there's no reason for the faculty to be apologetic about the salaries that they've received over the period of time in question, which was from 2006 to current, 2012 actually was the focal point of that report, and also that faculty were in fact the lowest source of expenditures during that period of time examined. Since then, the data team has produced some information associated with mill levy trends, and I'd be happy to make that available to the trustees and to Dr. Sobchak as well. But just in short, you know, I think we wanted to agree really with some of the comments that the trustees had made in the last meeting, that best decisions are made by those who have the best information. I think that was a quote that I can attribute to trustee Cook, and we actually looked at the information that we've all been looking at throughout this period of time, and we just looked at it in a slightly more refined way, and with an eye particularly on the faculty contributions to those challenges, and that can hopefully better inform us as to the decisions that have to be made going forward. I also had a note, you know, that trustee Musil made a statement that it's important to responsibly handle other people's money, and we certainly would agree with that statement as well, as well as trustee Stewart's comment that you can't throw money at a problem or continuously raise the mill levy. And so, we would certainly agree that those statements are in fact correct, but it's important to understand if we are throwing our money anywhere where that money is being thrown. And again, to emphasize that, I think that on behalf of the faculty, it's important to underscore that the faculty are indeed the recipients of the lowest source of that expenditures over the period of time in question, and I would just call your attention to tables three and four in that report, to have a better understanding as to where some of the other expenditures, what might explain some of the other, where the costs actually are generating. I think, again, the purpose is, as I stated in the communication to Dr. Sobchak and to the trustees, I know that Dr. Sobchak communicated to you, is a co-endorsed document, so he was well aware of the work that was done, and our purpose was to inform, really not to be confrontational, but rather take a look at that data a little bit more closely, and hopefully that will guide decisions that need to be made over the next several months as we embark on the endeavor to address those considerable budget challenges. To switch gears just a little bit, I'd like to call your attention to some faculty-focused events and activities that are going on, including one that's going on this evening. First, I'll spend a little bit of time talking about Darwin Lawyer, who, we celebrated the long career of Darwin Lawyer yesterday, actually, in the Counseling Center. He, it struck me that we were celebrating 40 years of his service to this institution as a counselor, 40 years in this location, almost as long as I've been alive. So, it was kind of interesting to me to see his-
That's the meanest thing you've ever said, pointing out to the whole people up here.
Well, it just struck me that, you know, I've moved around a lot in my 46 years, but I certainly appreciate the dedication that it takes and the commitment it takes from individuals to dedicate 40 years of his career to one institution, and certainly Darwin has made a significant contribution to this institution. We also welcome back Marilyn Jones to a counselor position that was vacated by Chris Downing in May, and we look forward to welcoming back Nancy Long Hibler in November to replace Darwin as he enjoys his retirement. We also look forward, as a faculty association, in working with legal counsel and deans and faculty to complete the task of better defining and clarifying the master agreement with regard to the reduction in force section, and that I think is going to be something that we all benefit from as we have those discussions that have already actually begun, and we work towards achieving that in the most timely of manner, but also according to an appropriate and achievable timeline. Tonight, I mentioned there's an interesting activity going on. This is a colleague, and Stephanie Sabato, professor of graphic design, will deliver her college scholar talk called Morocco, the Exquisite and the Challenged, in the Hudson Auditorium of the Nuremuk Museum, and so she will talk about, actually, some of her experiences as a Fulbright scholar while in Morocco, and again, her presentation is part of the college scholars program that showcases faculty excellence in research fields and that goes beyond the classroom. And so, I hope to see some of you there tonight. There's a time, is it, well, we actually can make it to the reception, but 6:30 there's a reception, and at 7:00 PM, Stephanie will talk about her experiences in Morocco. So, with that, I will take questions, and again, Vin Clark is here from Faculty Senate. He asked to have some time, out of my time, to make a statement on behalf of the Faculty Senate, and so I'd like to let him say what he needs to say with regard to that as I exit, but before that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Deb, I would say that I continue to believe that better information makes better decisions. Appreciate the effort and the work. We have not had an opportunity to discuss that as a board, but that will go through the management process, and appreciate that effort being done. With that, I'd like to hear from Dr. Clark.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I just want to read you a brief statement that was adopted unanimously by the Faculty Senate in light of the research that the faculty research team did, and it reads as follows. "The Faculty Senate supports the findings of the Faculty Association Research Team and wishes to communicate to the administration and the trustees its belief that the college's top priority at this time is the preservation of instructional resources." So, that was passed, and I commend that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That takes us to the foundation, trustee Cross.
Yes, there's been a flurry of activity, trustee Cook, Chair Cook, going on with the foundation, and we, on September 4th, the foundation held its annual scholarship luncheon in the Rehner Center to recognize the foundation's scholarship winners, and more than 200 people attended the event, and special thanks to trustees Musil and Sharp, and president Sobchak, and the foundation director, Tom Mitchell, for leading the special event. September 11th, there was, the foundation held a CEO reception welcoming leaders of local companies to campus to meet our new president and learn about opportunities to partner with the college. The response to the event was terrific, and there was more than 100 people in attendance. In September, Friends with Taste members were given an opportunity to attend the JCC culinary team practice dinners in preparation for the team's upcoming culinary competition in Korea. 60 seats were available at three separate dinners, and each dinner sold out quickly. The membership actually continues to grow now to more than 400 participants, with $38,000 raised to support the hospitality and culinary program, and at a low level, but my wife and I are members, and I'd encourage, I'm assuming a lot of you are, and members in the audience that are watching online, to participate, because it really is a fabulous facility and breathtaking that was done, I believe, through public and private contributions. So, again, I am amazed at the wonderful things we do here. The foundation directors actually met this past Tuesday. Trustee Sharp and I attended the meeting, in which the foundation's financial report for fiscal year 2013 was a primary focus of the meeting. One highlight was that the foundation was able to set an all-time record in providing 963,000 in scholarship funds that were successfully matched with nearly 900 college students here. The directors also received an update on Some Enchanted Evening, which is, as you know, our signature scholarship gala to be held on November 9th. Mary Birch, who was leading that event, gave us a report with a tremendous amount of donors coming forward this year, new donors, including Dr. Sobchak and his wife making a substantial contribution. And the event is almost sold out, so we're looking forward to honoring Lynn Mitchellson, who's actually going to be recognized as the 2013 Johnson Countyan of the Year. October's going to be another busy month for the foundation, as the trustees are invited to three foundation events in early October. First, there's going to be a foundation, the foundation will host a donor recognition luncheon at 12:00 PM in the Cube, prior to the Hospitality and Culinary Academy dedication on October 6th. And then next, there'll be a foundation board, the full foundation board will come together again at 6:00 PM on October 8th in the Rehner Center for its annual dinner. And finally, we hope the trustees will join us for the annual Johnson Countyan of the Year luncheon at noon on October 10th in the Hospitality and Culinary Academy. All past Johnson Canyans of the year are invited to this event, and thanks to the college and the trustees for their continued support of the foundation, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Cross. Any questions? Trustee Cross. Trustee Musil.
I'd just make the comment that the scholarship luncheon, if you haven't been able to attend that, to hear the students tell about how important a $500 scholarship is to their education, and the fact they can get six credit hours at Johnson County Community College, and to hear the variety of stories, and the people that come from Nevada, Missouri, to come to our culinary center, the people that take online courses in Lawrence, the number of single parents that couldn't attend any higher education but for Johnson County Community College. It is the most inspiring hour, or an hour and a half, that I ever spend each year. So, I would encourage everybody, if they're invited to it, to get the chance to come, because it is very, very much an energizing part of this college's work.
Thank you. I just want to add, trustee Cross was very complimentary of the foundation in distributing almost $1 million in scholarships, but that actually, the credit for that matching up for scholarship dollar to student is, with the financial aid department, who do an incredible job of that every single year. It'd take $1 million and try to match that up in increments of $500 to $1,000. It's quite a consuming effort, so credit goes to the financial aid department as well.
Thank you very much. Next item is the consent agenda. It's an item where we deal with a number of routine items that can be taken in one motion. Does any trustee wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Any trustee want to pull an item off? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We do have an executive session tonight. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal manners. This session will last no longer than 20 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Ms. Wilson, Ms. Schlist, Dr. Korbe, Dr. Sobchak, and our Board of Trustees, Mr. Ferguson? You want Mr. Ferguson or not, necessary? Okay. In this session. With that-
I would so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We are out of the executive session. The executive session started at 6:15. We came out of executive session at 6:26. No action was taken. We are back in our regular meeting. With no further business at hand, we are adjourned.